Oops, we're not here. Good evening. Welcome to Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 Selectmen Select Board Meeting. I'll get it right one of these times. The Select Board Meeting is, we have all of our selectmen in attendance. There's Mark and Noah on Zoom, the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, and the Town Finance Director with us. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all just please stand for one more moment, please. I'd like to have a moment of silence as to think about what's happening over in the war in Ukraine and all the millions of people suffering. And please pray for a swift and peaceful resolution. Thank you. We have the approval of our February 22nd meeting minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Patty did find one mistake. We'll have to ask you to amend that. Is under the warrant articles, paying the warrants, is the second AP warrant should be a payroll warrant, I believe. Correct, Patty?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so we have one amendment to the existing. So if you can change your amendment, your motion there, Noah?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
I second it.
No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. Brings us to first public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? If not, we'll be moving on. We have a public hearings tonight. Is, uh, public hearings on the approval of medical marijuana, medical caregivers license and production facility licenses. These are all renewals, correct, James?
We have two new ones and then the first is a renewal.
Okay. Is, um, we have the first one is Medical Marijuana Production Facility and Caregiver Retail Storefront License Renewal of 513 Portland Street under the operation of TRICAN.
We have Aaron here from TRICAN. We have no active violations or complaints. It seems like they've been operating for a few years now and...
No issues?
No issues? Turn it back over to Tom if...
Um, yeah, it is, um, if you step to the podium if you would, there might be some questions. And as far as I know, there's been no problems or anything. As I've spoken to the police chief several times about all these establishments and doesn't seem to be any problem at all. Actually, they're, uh, seem to be model citizens, so. Does anybody have any questions?
No, there hasn't been any issues now.
Nope.
Any comments on your side?
I mean, we just keep trying to do the right thing and, you know, just keep being participants of the town. That's it.
All right.
You have any questions for the board or anything like that? Move in.
No, I don't think so. Pretty clear on everything.
All right. Do look for a motion for a renewal.
I make a motion that we renew TRICAN's license.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. There's Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
No. Yes.
Mike?
Sorry. No, I had no issues. Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes to renew.
And I have a yes. Five, what? It's five zero.
Okay, it's not just me. I got it, Linda.
Then we have Medical Marijuana Production Facility Licenses at 398 School Street. And this is four separate units. Has, uh, you have any information for us, James?
One of the mandates I had from the last time is to make sure that we investigated some of the complaints over at 398 School Street. Since that time, I have not been aware of any order complaints. The lighting was investigated. We do have a report from our code enforcement officer showing that the lighting does not seem to be leaving the property. We are aware of some other lighting issues on property that's not on 398 School Street that is being addressed. So here on Zoom is Brendan Riley. And he's also, he is representing himself for Unit J and he's stepping in for his father who's in Unit L. I don't believe the tenants of Unit M or O are here, so we can table those two to a later date. But I'll turn it back over to the chair and...
Is, um, so James is the one or is it?
Brendan.
Brendan is the one that's on Zoom. Is again, is, uh, is we had this discussion in the fall with code enforcement and the Town Manager. Now, there were some complaints from the neighbors. Code went out and investigated. As you heard James' report on that. So it appears to be everything is in order. Brendan, you have anything to say or?
Yes, I mean, as far as I'm aware, everyone here has come forward and put their scrubbers in their units. And if there's any more complaints, as far as myself, I'd be more than happy to continue to do whatever is needed. But that's pretty much it.
So we have two separate units. Is, um, and, um, Town Manager's ideas, we maybe table the other two since we don't have them here to talk to. So I'll take a motion for Brendan Riley in Unit J.
I'll make a motion.
Make the motion.
Motion?
A second.
We'll have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. There's Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So then we have James Riley Jr. at Unit L.
I'll make a motion to accept the license for James Riley Jr. at Unit L.
A motion in, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
Do we need an official motion to?
Table the other two?
To table the other two? So I'll make a motion to come back to Units M and O at a later date.
All right, second it.
We have a motion to table the next two since we don't have any representatives here. Is we have a motion in a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. There's Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So those two will be tabled. Very good. I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
We have no reports of committees, no department reports, no presentations. That brings us to our unfinished business in a budget workshop. All right.
Either two of the bigger outstanding items, one dealing with road funding and the question of, um, how much should we offset it with surplus? Lisa put together a really helpful table. In 2017, we had $350,000 with 100% coming from surplus. 2018 was 330,000 with 100% coming from surplus. 2019 was 150,000 with 33% coming from surplus. 2020 was 600,000 with 42% coming from surplus. 2021, 600,000 with 100% coming from surplus. And then it was the opposite in 2022. My recommendation for this year would be, we want to reach that 700,000 and 10% coming from surplus. Think one of the big reasons, I think it'd be good to build it up, having our taxes pay for it and not come from surplus. But also, the, it'll help, every penny will help with LD1 if we have to face that for next year. So if we have to offset it, I think having that 10% will help us next year.
Any questions for James or?
Yeah, just so for clarification, because at the last meeting, there was some confusion about whether or not we had not been budgeting for it over the last several years. That is actually not true. We have been budgeting, except for, not last year, but the year before. It's 100, so, so just so we're clear on that, that helped get that straightened out. I still believe, you know, the roads should be in the budget as much as we can. Granted, the market being the way it is, there is, with the taxes, there has been a larger amount in the undesignated fund and we have a lot of capital improvements we want to do. So this particular year, using more money from the undesignated fund makes sense as long as we are, you know, taxing a certain percentage and then moving forward each year to get it back into that, you know, sustainable coming out of the tax rate.
Just to be clear, we are saying that we want a total of 700,000 for road repairs. We want 630,000 to come from the undesignated fund and 70,000 to be raised from taxes and then slowly increase that rate until it's more balanced.
Precisely.
Correct.
All right. Just wanted to make sure everybody has it clear.
All right.
Thanks, Noah.
Any other questions or comments on that? Oh. I may, I may come back to Whitmaw. Is, uh, continue on if you would.
The next, next point of discussion, I think this is actually the last, last one we wanted to square away, was the police requesting the 5% for the chief and the captain. They did, they did some work pulling it together and I do thank them for doing that. They use the average, I would use the median. And I think if we use the median plus adding in 3%, can see that the chief is probably $2,000 behind the median in the, in the region. And I think when we're comparing police departments in the region, there really isn't anyone, I mean, it's, North Berwick is the smallest population wise, but everyone else, I mean, tax base wise, I mean, it's pretty much, we're comparing ourselves to Old Orchard Beach and Gunkwit, things like that. So that's a kind of a philosophical discussion is, should we be at the median? I mean, I think it's great. Yeah, we should be with Kittery and, and all that. So Chief Town is, as of July 1st, would be 102,000, median 104,000. Uh, second in command is Captain, median is 91,800 and Captain right now is at 88,500. And if we went 5%, that would be at 90,000.
Now, this is, we've had this discussion several times over the past years and that's one of the problems we have, not just with these positions, but with all our positions, is comparing our salaries to the surrounding towns. And finding something comparable to what we are is really hard. Is, you know, when we do negotiations with the unions and stuff, a lot of times we, same thing we get. You know, the, the wages from Wells in York and Old Orchard and Kittery and places like that that along the coast, east of 95, as I like to say, and, um, you know, is we just can't compete with them. Is I understand, you know, the chief and the captain both, you know, how they feel. I've talked to Chief Town about this several times. And again, I, I, I think that we're right in where we should be with the salaries, so.
Well, you know, guys, I was thinking, you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
I think that, um, personally, I think they deserve a raise. After having dealt with them for the last couple of years, it's a very professional, very professional, uh, piece of body we have over there. And, and I wouldn't want to lose them. Just like everyone else, the prices are going up, you know, they have to provide for a family, things are going up. And I don't think that's going to break us by giving those two guys a raise.
Well, they're guaranteed a 3% raise, correct? So, and what they're asking for is a five?
Right.
Okay.
So it's a 2%.
James, what does that total out to?
It's, it's approximately a difference of, um, given the 4%, it's a difference of $4,000.
Each or combined together?
Combined.
You know, okay, everyone, the way it is now, that Peter Police Department has a real crappy job. And, you know, a lot of departments don't have the guys we have. And I just, after this last episode, I think I'm, I'm proud of these guys.
Well, I am too. I'm proud of them too. And, um, is I think they've done a lot for the town. And, but again, I'm, I have to look out for everybody in town. You know, we're offering a 3%, they want a 5, we'll split it to 4.
Possible. Uh, one other question, James? I have another question. James, these are department leaders. Have other department leaders been reevaluated in the past year or two?
There have been department heads that have received more than 3%.
So it's not, this isn't a precedent. This is?
Right, no, no. There, there have been, there have been adjustments, you know, to several, several different people over the last seven years.
4% would be my recommendation. I think that it shows them a token and, and give us more time next year to continue evaluating where we're at in the region. And I think it'd be ni, it'd be nice to find if there's more comparables in mid-coast Maine or something. So we're not always, something that's fair, we can agree upon as a metric.
You know, is, is one of the things we might need to do is to go further afield, you know, into Cumberland County, some of the medium-sized towns and places like that, you know, that have, you know, established police force, you know. In York County, once we get past us, it turns almost all into sheriffs. Yeah, so, is, uh, nothing really there, you know, so we're in the buffer to the wild west and, uh, so.
And maybe if we get it, you know, start looking at it sooner. I mean, this kind of came in late into the budget process. Yeah, I could be open to splitting the difference.
And I think we could create a model. I mean, even if we're looking at weight, communities that are our population size, our tax, our assessment, and then we can adjust it for York County's higher expenses. But we can come up with some sort of model. That way we're not always compared to...
Old Orchard Beach.
Exactly.
A Gunkwit. So, um, but, you know, and, you know, and this all, this all feeds back into what I talked about earlier and we, we're going to, uh, after the budget process is over, um, we're going to sit down and talk about succession plan and, and how things proceed from here. Because I, I do have a concern with a lot of our police force being retirees and that cuts off any advancement for younger, you know, officers. You know, if, if all the senior positions are held by retirees, there's no place for anybody to advance. And so that's a concern of mine. I, I like to be able to keep people in the system, working up through the system and taking over, sorry, what we had with our Town Manager here. You know, as, um, you know, from a union background and I believe in apprenticeships and things like that and, and working on the job and internships. And I think it's important that we do things like that, so. Anything else on the budget, Mr. Town Manager?
Ever. Two more things. One more, we had a proposed increase to the Public Works budget. We've been working on an order for a single-axle dump truck for Public Works. And we recently had the financing for that and in order to cover the lease payment, it's an increase of 37,895.
That would be in the capital?
That would, lease payments.
Lease payments.
In the Public Works operating budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so 37, what was it?
37,895. And that's already reflected in the most up-to-date warrants in your packets.
But it's not in the original budget that was put out?
Correct, correct.
So we're talking?
It's a Western Star 4700 dump truck.
Two axle?
Single axle.
Single axle. Now, how much is the truck?
With, um, the equipment, it's, it's, is it correct? If I'm wrong, $250,000?
$250,000?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all fitted up, ready to go, files, standards?
Yes, that's everything.
Yep.
And we're looking to lease it, not, okay.
Right.
Yep, so that's it.
It's the lease purchase. So it's a, I mean, we'll own it when the lease is finished. Five-year lease.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lease, uh, purchase is $250,425.
Jesus, huh?
I don't come change.
Last one I have, and this, this is a big one and I'm, I'm curious. The Diamond Hill Bridge is developed pretty quickly. We just have a final design on it. I'm proposing a five-year bond. It's $800,000. It's, it really, we, the construction timeline could be winter of 2023. Can't really wait, it can't really wait another year. It's been posted for five tons. So a five-year bond, uh, it's 106 or 170,000 dollar payments for five years. The good news would be, once it's paid off five years from now or six years from now, it's a 100-year investment. We don't have to deal with it again. I mean, there's other, other, I mean, if we wanted to extend the, to a 15-year bond and get the payment down, it's just we're paying over $100,000 in interest.
Yeah, in interest.
I think we would be able to, you know, absorb that and kind of get through over the next five years and have it be behind us.
What's the interest rate on the bond?
About 2%.
2%. I mean, my question is, we're already seven and a half bonded out right now, or seven and a half million bonded out as a town. When are these coming down? Like, where are we? Because as we know, inflation's going up. I, I just think it's a tough year to throw another bond at the town because, and I know it's a bridge, I know it's got to be done. And I know we've been pushing it as a town. But when you throw, what's going to happen to everybody else in town on top of Berwick's still a destination town? You know, that property value's going up in time. I mean, for better or worse, property value's going to go up next year or two. And I think that's going to hit a lot more to people's wallet to just throw another bond out there. I, I'm not really in a spot to really be in favor of dropping another bond on the town right now. And I think I'd want to try to get some of that seven and a half cleaned up, you know, before we start throwing more into there, because that's going to put us, what, 8.3, 8.3 million?
Is, one, one of, one of the things, you know, is if, when we do sell the old fire station, you know, that...
Brings it down.
...go towards the bond on the fire department. So that, you know, takes a big chunk. We're hoping for close to $400,000 there paying down. Is...
I know, and I get that, but we're still a year past and haven't gotten that finalized yet either. And I think we're hoping that things are going to come in that we haven't seen finalized yet.
On the other bonds?
That's, that's my question.
I know there's, I don't have the exact dates, but...
Let's see, the fire station is a 15-year bond, I believe. And, um, that would, that was, this, we're in the second year of that, I think. We have a bond before that for the million dollars for the fire trucks, I believe. That's two years.
I think Lisa's trying to...
Yep.
Okay.
She's trying to look it up for our sand answer at the same time.
My only point that I would make is that, um, yeah, it's a lot and it's another bond and, you know, people are going to be upset about it, like they are with everything that gets tacked. But when we first start, when I first joined the board and we were talking about redoing the Redland Road Bridge, the Diamond Hill Bridge and all that stuff, I believe the estimated cost to, to repair, to redo those bridges at the time was about half a million each. And now we're talking about 800,000 three years later. So if we wait another year or two, is it going to be a million dollars to redo that bridge? I mean, because inflation's going to hit construction as well, so.
Oh, yes.
Inflation's already hit construction now.
It already did.
But I just mean, like, we, we, we're putting it off, we might be putting it off a year or two so that we're not paying for it now, but we end up paying for it later with even higher amounts. That's the only thing that I would draw attention.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough one because it could be a year and the bridge gets shut down and it becomes a...
I understand.
What's the other bonds? You said those two. What are the others?
We have, we have three currently, if you want me to jump in here.
That'd be great, Lisa.
Please.
Yes, we have the 2017 bond for the two fire trucks and the windows in the auditorium and the clock tower. That was originally 1.125 million. It, it, at June 30, 2021, it was at 937,500. It's paid off in November of 2037. We have a bond for 22, um, the 2019 bond was $6 million for the fire station construction. At June 30th, the balance was 5,000, 5,760,000 and that's paid off in November of 2044. Those are the long-term bonds. And then we have water bonds too, but that's separate.
Right. All right, so, so I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, branch out here a little bit. Undesignated fund balance, the surplus, um, is, you know, I sent out the email last week, you know, giving some broad ideas about what we could do for the, with that and how we can manage that. Lisa, could you tell us how much we're estimating that we're going to need to have the 12.5% in reserve?
Um, let me, uh, hold on one second.
No problem.
Uh, Jane? So with the changes that were made, um, with Public Works, the 12.5, let's see, where's, 12.5, at June 30th, we're going to need 2.4 million.
All right. And what's the estimate for the surplus at, on June 30th? So it was like 4.5? Well, well, we, I know, but we've, uh, we, we had the figure of around four and a half million before.
Yep, that was at June 30, 2022, so...
2020.
So that was, the 12.5 was to cover this fiscal year's budget.
Right. So, um, and we're looking to take approximately 1.3 out also for the capital improvements that we've talked about earlier. So that brings us up to about 3.7 million that we need to have in abeyance in reserve. in reserve. You know, I had talked about, you know, using the money before for roads and projects like that, is we could use some of the remaining funds to, instead of doing an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar bond, do a six-hundred-thousand-dollar or a five-hundred-thousand-dollar. You know, I, I think it's important that we do that bridge this year. As Noah said, is, the cost is going up, is if we wait another year, it's going to be a million dollars. And, you know, that just, you know, increases our interest that we have to pay, so...
So you're saying that we're going to use seventy thousand, no, we're taxing for seventy thousand, so two-hundred, I'm sorry, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand undesigned comes out of here. That's not part of the capital. That leaves you three-point-seven and you, I can't remember.
We have to keep two-point-four.
Or...
Yeah. Yeah. So Lisa, is if we, if we were, wanted to do something like that and use some of the money to, you know, decrease the bond, the amount we needed to bond, is how much possibly could we use? I know, I know you're going to say none.
No, no, I, I mean, it's...
And is it allowable out of the undesignated fund?
I, I don't like to estimate what we're going to have. I mean, there's no way to really, there, there is no way to tell, you know? But I can't imagine it being lower than what it is right now. So we needed to...
What is it, what is it?
For, well, for this, I just went back to last fiscal year, or this fiscal year. I keep getting confused with this and last.
Yeah, welcome back and forth here.
So, let me see, hold on one second. So we needed two-point-one-four, about two-point-one-five for this year's budget. And we didn't use any, so I, I would, I would say it's going to be at least four-point-five.
For next year.
For four-point, okay. So that's what I was thinking.
Unless, I mean, unless something really drastic happens, like we under-collect revenues. But at this point, I don't foresee that happening.
Right.
Or we overspend the budget, which...
You won't let us do that.
With the government, with the sewer, lining, and all of that, I mean, there's going to be, there could be some overages, but in some of the budgets, in some of the department budgets, but hopefully the other department budgets will be able to cover those overages.
Right.
I mean, we've had some unexpected expenses this fiscal year.
How, um, do we have enough money for gasoline, for the, for the town fuel, for all the, you know, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department? It's going to be double what we used last year, all of ours, right?
For gas or, or heating?
Potentially.
Either one.
Neither one at this point.
We're going to get to the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, um, so, but...
I mean, today, the per two is at five, just about five-thirty a gallon.
Yeah.
Is that figured in the budget? Do you have that dollar amount in, or we found an old number?
We're going to be on, we're going to, we'll be out to bid for that again. We bid every year.
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't know what the forecast looks like, but it doesn't look pretty.
No, it's double the price.
Yeah, I mean, we budgeted for less, for three percent less.
Yeah.
I don't think that's going to materialize. And it just in Public Works, heat, we're budgeting for less than three-point-eight percent. I think we went in the wrong direction. Gas and oil.
Over four dollars a gallon now.
If you look at that, where's the police?
Yeah, it's gas and oil. He's only got six-point-six up.
Going, going back, going back to what you said about the heat, though, if you go back and look at what we budgeted and what we've been using, is, you know...
No, I, I get that.
We've been using less than what we've been budgeting for.
Right, it's been warmer, but I just have the fear that the price is going to go...
We waste oil there, too, so, as we get some heat out of that. So I, I, you know, getting back to the bridge, is, is, the Rhythm Road Bridge is actually rated for a higher tonnage than the Diamond Hill Road, and we closed that one down, is, so, is, and I know for a fact that the construction logging trucks are going over the Diamond Hill Road Bridge constantly. And I guess we could hope that one of them goes through the bridge, and then we could sue them for going over the posted limit, but...
That's, yeah.
So, what do you think of my proposal of using some of the money from the undesignated surplus, you know, to go towards that bond?
But that means, if we do that, then that means we're going to need to tax more for the roads instead of ten percent.
No, 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 we have, we have other monies in there that we're not using.
But if you're expecting four-point-five, you're taking out one-point-three, you've got to keep in two-point-four, you were saying, your email, you were indicating that we're going to use that to offset the roads, we're going to do ten percent tax and take the rest out of undesignated funds.
That was already built into...
That's already built in that one-point-three.
That's already built into our figures.
Okay, but if you do that, is there enough?
Yes, that, that includes the money that was in that one-point-three.
I think there would be enough for, if we did two-hundred thousand additional from surplus, recognizing that means there's two-hundred less for next year, but given the offset of interest and, I guess, the situation we're in, we're dealing with, I mean, that's, is that...
Hot, hot, hot tub's going up ten dollars a ton this, this spring. They, they predict another five. That's going to, we're going to, we're going to do, we'll have more money, but we're going to be able to get less hot tub put down because of the price increase.
Right.
Jeez.
And that's one of the reasons I pushed to have it, you know, increased like we did, you know, because we're, we're going, as you said, we're going backwards, you know, just from inflation, so...
Oh, yeah.
So if we took the, you know, an extra two-hundred thousand to go towards the bridge, that would still leave us with more than half a million left in the undesignated surplus.
That's available.
That's available afterwards, so...
But based on the rules of the undesignated fund, can you tap into that if any of these budgets go over? Say...
No.
No.
That's what I thought.
So that's...
No, it is...
Not without a town we need to go.
Yes, we need a town we need to go.
Right, that's what I thought. So I'm circling back to the fact that we have inflation on gas and everything else.
We might need that.
And we've budgeted for less than last year, or broke even on the police budget for fuel, not heat, but gas and oil. Where's that coming out of? If they go over, where's it coming out of?
I think is we, we, what we have in place is if an individual budget goes over, is
if there's a surplus in another department, we can reassign that money towards that. No, so we've done that in the past. We haven't had to do it a war, is I don't know if we had to do it at all this last year.
Last year, we did not.
No.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember doing it last year.
Yeah, I don't think we've done it.
Before, we did like three, but it was minimal money.
Yeah. And usually it was something like paying for salt and sand, if I remember correctly, is where we tended to go over every year, so... But, you know, we still have the option of going back to the public and asking for more money if we need to, is...
Do you want to see that in, like, the, for anything that has fuel in it, in just, you want to see that figure in?
Yeah. I, I can't imagine that this year's budget is, is going to go less than last year's. It's going to go up, it's going to, it's going to go up.
Yep.
So whether it's Public Works, Police, Fire, anyone using vehicles.
Just curious what they were using from.
Rather than...
Chemicals is a lot of plan, anything, everything and everything's going on.
Yeah. Is, is rather than going through every, every department's budget with a line item increase...
No, I mean...
Is, is there some way we can do it as a bulk thing, Lisa, do you think, of having a reserve?
As a what?
Having, having some kind of a reserve for, in case of an increase in fuel prices that is beyond what we budgeted.
Is there a contingency? There's a contingency line for the town, correct?
There's a contingency, you can use.
Right. And how much is the contingency budget for?
Twenty thousand, I think.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You also have a balance in that account.
No.
So that right now is, hold on just a minute, we'll get to that part. James, do you remember how much I told you the contingency has in it?
I don't, off the top of my head.
Hold on just a moment, if I can find it.
The lease here.
So it already has, so we do have a lot of money in there.
So you're budgeting for another twenty, that's going to bring you to eighty-one for any overages for the fuel if, when the inflation, okay, okay.
Right.
So rolled in for every year.
Right.
Right, it's non-lapsing. So that, so we do have some money available if we need to for those.
And also with the fund balance policy, it states that if there are overages, that this department have the authority to use the, the reserve accounts, any money that's in the reserve accounts to, to offset that overage.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple different...
But I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's going to include the...
That makes me feel better about using the money for the bond, because then you, at least you have...
So now it's a matter of, you know, is, we've increased a couple line items in the budget already. Do we want to use two-hundred thousand for the bond, or more or less, or...
You're trying to offset the bridge bond?
Right, that's what I'm trying to do, is, I, I, like I said, I think it's really important that we move forward with this.
I mean, I'd, I'd rather try to take a few months and try to find another way and throw it back in November. That would, I mean, like Mark's saying, you know, blacktop's going to go up. I don't think eight-hundred K is going to cover the bridge regardless, and I think it, I honestly think it's going to, you're going to short-sell what the project's going to cost, and we're going to go into a bond, and we're going to be short of it this year. I think with everything that's going on, it's, you know, I don't think it's a natural progression of inflation. I think we're going to see a bubble go up and then come back down, and that's just where I think that supply is going to come back. We've seen that in years past. I just, I mean...
But if it goes in November, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be doing the bridge then. It would still be the spring of 2023 before you touch the bridge.
It'd be looking over. It's a real tough spot to be in.
It is.
Well, Rhythm Road is that, that's one of the spots over the Diamond Hill Road, right?
Diamond Hill now.
Diamond, Diamond Hill is where we...
I'm just talking about Diamond Hill right now.
Right.
Yeah, where Rhythm Road's already closed and seasonal, I mean, that's...
So that's not a problem.
We can wait, we can wait till that gets funded fifty-fifty.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, I don't know, probably, it's going to be higher priced anyway. You know the pricing on it's going to be high. I just know from what I do for a living, every time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's, it's every time.
And the other thing is that this is a bond, the town has to vote on it and approve it.
Yeah.
If they don't want it, they'll tell us, they've done it before, so...
Yeah, that's true.
Then, you know, it's, us putting it forward is just, you know, we're doing our job, putting it before them. If they reject it, that's them doing their job, and they made the choice that, you know, they don't want it this year, so...
I think that's a good idea, what Noah said. I think that, that sounds good.
Just put it up there, let the taxpayers decide.
Well, let them decide. That's what they, that's what, yeah, yeah, definitely. I don't think, I don't think it's there for us to decide, for the town. Just like Noah said, we'll put it forward to them and see what they say. If they say no, we say no. Let the road out.
I think if the...
Technically, none of this is up to us. It's all up to the town.
Exactly. They could refuse the whole budget and send us back to square one, and we just have to redo last year, we get a last year's budget, so...
If the bids come back over eight-hundred thousand dollars, we don't have to accept the...
No, we don't have to accept any bids anyways. No, that's our prerogatives, so...
I'm going to move on.
And it's a two-year bid, it's a two-year bond?
Five, five-year bond.
Five-year bond, sorry, five-year bond.
Does a state make us, tell us what we have to put in there for a bridge?
We had it, um, that's a good question. I'm not sure, but we had a, a bridge engineer go through it, and they are, I mean, they're building it to this, I think, I think there are DOT standards for...
It has to be the DOT standards anyways, yeah.
For the type of bridge, it's considered a low-use bridge, so that comes with different standards.
So why, why, why couldn't we use a box culvert? You know, there's going to be a better way of doing it, you know, what, DOT specs are great, but they're not always right.
Is, I, I think that, I think that, I think they probably not allow us to do a box culvert there, Mark, just because of the, the flow in the springtime.
Well, you have ring walls. Like, you have ring walls on a box culvert to stop it from going around.
We, uh...
I don't, it just, it depends on the size of the culvert, too, my, my Tom, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
I know, it's just, it's better, we should probably find a paperwork and see what the hell that says in there, and then go from there.
No.
If you don't even know what we're going in.
No, this, this is something that we've been working on for three years, is Steve started this project back then, and, you know, we had, we had the DOT come down several times to look at it and give us ideas, and then, you know, we hired the engineer to, to design it, you know, to their specifications, so, is, I, I think we go with what we have, we have the design, is I believe they're going to try to build the new bridge beside the existing bridge, is what they had talked about, is so that the bridge can still be used, so the traffic will continue, so... So it gets us back down to...
The bond.
The question, is do we move forward and do we go with, you know, a six-hundred-thousand-dollar bond and two-hundred thousand dollars from the surplus, or...
I, I like that idea. I like that idea. It gets the payment down a little bit. I mean, it's using the resources we have in hand. I mean, it's a tough, it's a really tough position to be in that we don't, didn't have funding scrolled away for it, to have to drop it on the voters for another bond. But I asked, hey, can the bridge close? Will that pose a self, a safety issue? And the answer back to me was yes.
Yeah, well, the public, the public safety vehicles, the school, everybody.
It's not necessarily getting, getting there because getting to either side of the bridge is the same amount. It's if they're at a call and they got to get to Little River Road. Plus, I mean, it does serve a transportation route to the schools, people from Little River coming down.
No, it is years and years ago, is when my kids were in school, is the bridge on Blackberry Hill Road over the railroad was condemned. And the school buses used to stop, let all the kids off, the kids would walk across the bridge and then the bus would pick them up on the other side.
Yeah.
I don't want, I want to avoid anything like that if possible. So I do, is, is my feeling is that the money in there is money that we've collected from the townspeople. We have the obligation to use that money to return as much as we can to the townspeople.
I'm 100% agree with that.
And if we take $200,000 out of that surplus, that equals what? About a year's payment, wasn't it? 178,000, you said? So that one year's payment less, you know, that would be paying interest on.
Right, it's a good chunk of interest, especially at the end.
You know, we are collecting interest on our money, but not very much. So.
What are our percent right now?
I could spend on that rate forever.
So that would, that would change Article 38 to $600,000 and then that would change. Believe the use of surplus from 630 to 830. Article 27.
Article 38, they would change from 800,000 to 600,000. I got to read this all off and make sure I get these right. And then what, the change to the.
Article 27 or 38, which one are you looking for?
Well, for, no, for the highway department.
I think that's already.
That was already. Yeah, I think that was the only.
The police would be, I think I did quick math, but if that's wrong, I think we could, I just, I think you can say we'll grant the 4%.
The 4% on the.
The police budget has enough money in it for the 4%.
So it would change.
That's already in there to cover that.
Thank you.
Any further discussions on the budget?
I'm going to let you guys move forward with it. I will approve 27 in case it goes through. But we know where I'm going with that.
All right, let's see, the budget. Any other questions, comments on the budget? If not, I think we can move on.
So can we just summarize what we're doing here so that everybody's aware? So we're going to approve the police department raises at 4%.
For the captain and the chief.
Captain and the chief. We're going to go out to bond for 600,000, take 200,000 out for the bridge, Diamond Hill Bridge. And for the roads, we're budgeting 10% and taking the other 90% out of, getting designated. Okay, all right.
And we increase the budget for the trucks.
Oh, for the truck, yes.
Public work expense, yes.
Is, is, I didn't, I didn't see, did the school board present their budget last week?
They did. I've been clicking on their agenda to try to get their recorded link. I haven't, it's not on there yet, but I haven't heard.
I hadn't heard on what they had talked about, so it's always a big mystery.
I think they're meeting tonight. There's a workshop tonight as well.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
All right. Moving on, is town manager report.
I have an update to the pandemic policy. To my surprise, on Monday, CDC was still publishing levels of community spread. And they have community levels where one metric is red in the state, the other metric is yellow, so change to pandemic policy. And I believe the way that the CDC is making recommendations now is it's optional regardless of vaccination status.
Correct.
So I just want to put that out. Is that something we want to do? I mean, I think our policy has been, we want to follow the CDC as closely as possible.
Yeah, I think we've been very consistent with just saying we're going to take CDC recommendation and follow that. And I think that keeps us just black and white to that.
Works for me. I'm not an expert in all this stuff.
Remind people to be safe, just don't be dumb, you know.
The scientists smarter than us, yeah.
That's the only, I mean, there's other things that probably could be tightened up, but for now, since we do have those two, two metrics out there.
There's got to be a baseline, following the CDC guidelines is the safest baseline.
Yeah.
And the difference between the two, one's purely cases, the other one includes hospitalizations, and that's the, really, that's the metric to go with.
Closer to an endemic from a pandemic every day.
That it? That all you have for us?
Yeah, I can get a motion to.
Accept the new pandemic policy? Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the updated pandemic policy.
Motion, do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Any further discussion? As I'll go through the roll, Noah?
Yes.
Mark? Mark?
Hit him quickly.
Yes. I can read this.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes, okay.
Last thing I have, Spirit of America.
Oh, yes.
It's due June 30th, and I think typically we do, they recommend doing, who we did our dedication to the town report. We dedicate our town report to like 15 people, the essential workers. So if we are, I kind of, I have an idea for nomination, and I don't know how we want to decide. They have a county level event and it's just basically celebrating volunteers. Put it on the radar, we have till June 30th.
Yeah, it's something that we just started a couple of years back, you know, getting involved in that some more.
Yeah, I think it's important.
It's always a great thing to do.
Yeah, I think it is, to recognize people.
Anything else to come in? Any questions for James?
Yes. I wanted to know about the property on 236 and if there was interest, if there's a minimum bid, what the situation is going on with that.
We just put a notice in the paper, I think that's going to be in the paper this Friday, it's posted to our website. The notice has been posted online. So I believe the policy states that the select board reserves the right to accept or deny bids, but I think it'd be good to, we didn't put it in the notice, but if you want to talk about a minimum bid or create, think of a process or.
Well, typically, well, in the past, we did, there was a minimum to cover all our expenses and everything. But typically, that's only a few thousand dollars.
Right.
And in the past is, the town has let, you know, things just go for the highest bid, even if it was only $500. For some things, I can see that, but for property nowadays, I have a hard time doing that. Is we're, we're missing an opportunity for the town to, you know, maximize what we get out of this. I don't know, I, do other towns have policies where they work with realtors or anything? Do you know?
Only from one inquiry I received, they asked if we did work with a realtor, a real estate agent. Yeah, I mean, a lot like that could go for several tens of, I mean, a couple of tens of thousands of dollars.
Well, they got to pay their back taxes, that's already going to be up there, plus any closing costs, anything like that. So now you're already, what, $10,000, $15,000 in?
No, probably not, probably not. The taxes, taxes on that property weren't, no, I can't imagine they're very high.
But they hadn't been paid in several years.
Probably three years, right?
Yeah, I think I saw it online, it was like 47 or 48 hundred dollars, and then closing costs.
Are you talking about 46, about 236?
Yes.
Yes.
So as of today, the back tax is a 2,773,83.
Okay.
It's not even $3,000 and the only cost, unless James has talked to the attorney about it, the only cost so far are advertising. And if we do the sealed bid, the buyer has to provide that quickly indeed.
Yep.
So no further costs to us other than advertising.
Did we put there was a minimum bid? Because I mean, have you already posted it to people?
It's posted, yeah.
And did we put minimum bid? I don't believe so.
Aside from they have to pay their taxes and costs, no.
Where's the property again on 236?
It's right across from the post office, I think.
Yeah, boneless right across the post office. It's the little trailer next to the pond where the ghouls, I believe, used to live there. John.
Is it empty? Is it empty now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they only passed away. And there were no relatives, so.
We should be able to sell it.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, I agree with you. I don't think we should sell it for $5,000. I think we should.
No, you should be, get a realtor and sell it, tell them you didn't buy it.
You know, I don't think we can go back now and put a minimum bid when we didn't before, but again, doesn't mean we have to take it. But I mean, we know what it's, we should, we should find out what the value of it is.
A buildable lot in Brook is going for $80,000.
Someone's going to have to clean that.
Yeah, but still.
Trailer off because it's pretty much collapsed right there.
Yeah, yeah.
The policy says sealed bid, but it's something we could look at. I had a, I had a very positive experience working with an agent with the fire station, didn't take that much of my time.
Right.
I think it'd be good to look at the policy. If we're getting buildable lots.
It already was water and sewer.
They probably have water and sewer tied in too, right?
Right, yeah, I imagine they do.
I think they have sewer, but not water.
They have the ability, I mean, the ability to, but it's not, not tied to water.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we, you know, the, you know, go through the process that we have, we might be surprised, we might get a bid for $20,000, you know, is.
We might get one for 50 or 60 if somebody knows the value of the buildable lot, too.
Right, so.
Let me, let me ask this question. If we've already posted it, there's no minimum, there's a deadline. If we get all the sealed bids, is there a requirement that we have to take any of the bids if they're all low? Can we?
No, no, is the selectance policy is that we can either refuse all bids or we don't have to choose the lowest bid or the highest bid.
Right.
We choose the, we can choose the bid that we think in our opinion is best for the town.
Most of the people who are going to bid on it are going to be people who are.
Or we just throw them out, right? We just throw them all out, start over.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, why don't we let the process go?
Yeah.
If someone's going to give us close to a market value in this process, then we won't need to get a realtor involved and pay that expense. If we get all the bids and they're all low bids, then okay, let's go get a realtor. I mean, we're in no rush.
No, but they're watching by the rush, Katie, bring it.
Yeah, but the people who are going to bid on it, they may be builders. They may know, they may say, hey, I'm going to throw a bid of 70,000 out there. And if it saves us the realtor fee, it's close enough, but if everyone's lowballing, then we'll just say we don't accept any and then go to a realtor.
Right, we should do that then.
Works for me. Can I answer your question, Noah?
Yes, very sad attack early.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for bringing it up. Any other questions for James?
I do have James, the, before, when you were talking about the other articles, they were, we talked about them before about the subdivisions and whether they had to pave or not pave, and about the signage, they were going to bring us back some updated.
They, they, they're in the exhibits.
And I saw that in the exhibit, but I didn't see.
The road, the road, I think the road standards.
I was going to ask when we got to it.
Yeah, exhibit, is it exhibit C? Because I see Article 5.
The road standards piece is taken out completely.
Just taken out?
Taken out, yeah.
Okay. And then the other one was the signage that we had questions, they were going to come back.
I don't remember the specific questions.
The question was like, you couldn't, you could only put balloons up for like one day, and I asked about, well, what if it's a holiday weekend and it's that? And they were going to.
Almost looks like they dropped that out, too.
Right, it looks like they dropped that out completely, too. And I just wanted to make sure, was it dropped? If it is, it's fine, I just want to be clear.
Oh, wait, sent it.
Yeah, that's it. I think we should just, I mean, I think at this point.
I just don't want to vote on it unless we clarify.
Balloons or other inflated devices displayed more than one day are prohibited. I mean, we can cross that right out.
Yeah, I just think that the typical thing, if you're, if you're really going to crack down on signage, like lights, they can't be flashing, they can't be that.
Yeah.
If someone's going to have like a presidential sale for a car dealership, well, okay, I can't, I can't put lights up.
Yeah.
But I can put balloons up for three days. I think limiting it for one day is an awful lot of expense.
Especially if you talk about this business is coming to the edge and they're going to want to promote themselves for a week or something.
Right, they're going to want to promote themselves.
Yeah.
You know, oh, this is our grand opening weekend, you're not even giving a weekend with only one day. I think we should either take it out or have a minimum, you know, at least three days.
I think we can take it out and they'll have another crack at it if they feel like it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to amend 7.13 signs, I guess when we get there.
Can I make a suggestion?
Of course.
I would like to sit with James and Lisa and review our warrant with all the changes so that we got everything right and maybe schedule a special meeting on the 15th to get your recommendations with the final.
You have to make court if you change this.
So next Tuesday?
Yeah.
I support that.
Yeah, me too.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should be good.
Doesn't have to be long.
Being talked about, I want to make sure we get them all and get them right and we have the right figures.
That saves me a bunch of time this meeting. And we'll go horse. All right. And we'll do.
When we get to new business, both of.
Table that till next day.
Table that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Lance.
All right. Anything else? No selectance communications, just to account payable. We have a payroll warrant number 53 for March 3rd, 2022, the amount of $79,395.10 and 5 cents. We have a payroll warrant number 54. We have a payroll warrant number 54 for March 10th, 2022, for the amount of $73,937.07. And then we have accounts payable warrant number 55 for March 8th, 2022, with the amount of $958,785.47. So I'll make a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No discussion, I'll go through the roll. There's Noah.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And myself is yes. That brings us to new business. On the new business, we have the town meeting warrant. As I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until next week at our special meeting.
Uh, second. We're gonna do 6:00 PM again.
Just gonna go through the roll. There's Noah.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
And that's 6 o'clock?
Six, six or 6:30? Six thirty?
Six, 6:30, it doesn't matter to me what time you guys wanna do it.
6:30, I think we just keep the regular time.
Keep it the same time?
6:30.
Okay.
All right, 6:30 it is. All right. Uh, we have no quick clean deeds. We have abatements and supplements. Karen, are you with us? Hi Karen, how are you?
Oh, you did.
Excuse me, is it?
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Glad to see everybody here tonight. Um, we have two items for tonight. Uh, the first one is an abatement. Uh, the property is located at 193 Route 236. Um, it's a 30.9 acre parcel, um, of which 12.5 acres are leased to Burwick Solar LLC. So this is a solar farm. And, um, so they're questioning the land, the land value. So this is brought on by the landowners, not the necessarily, uh, solar farm, which is leasing the land. So, um, they presented an abatement and presented some information about calculating the correct assessed value. Uh, this is rather new for us with solar farms. Um, in determining market value, we look at all three approaches to value, the sales comparison approach, the cost approach and the income approach. They're considered, or the income approaches seem to be the most reliable to determine a credible approach to value for income producing properties such as this, this one being a solar farm. Uh, so we looked at the prime site, uh, which is the 12.58 acres and looking at that is, uh, developing a value based on the income that's being produced. There's two different methods that we look at, the income capitalization method, um, as well as this kind of cash flow method. Um, and we reconcile those approaches. And when we reviewed the information that they also provided, uh, we were in somewhat of an agreement with, with their approach to value. Um, and we re, we redid our calculations. Um, they proposed an abated value for the real estate, um, to be at a discount of 10.3% and having a value of 442,919,000. Uh, when we did our calculations, we came up with, uh, a little bit higher value and that will be our recommendations. We put this on some spreadsheets. Um, and we were looking at the discounted cash flow method, uh, for the 12.5 acres of prime site to be 441,922,000. And using the income capitalization method, we used 5, it was 510,000. Uh, we reconciled those methods to derive an estimate of market value as of April 1st to be, uh, $463,000 for that prime site. So the total assessed value will be the, uh, prime site value of $463,000 plus the excess acres, um, which is 18.32 acres, uh, with an assessed value of 35,000 for a total assessed value of 498,600. Therefore, we are, we're recommending that the assessed value be reduced by 185,300 from 683,900 to 498,600 and that abatement be granted in the amount of $3,399.99. I know there's a, any questions?
Yeah, lots of them actually.
Okay.
Is, um, um, so the original assessment of the 683,900, um, that, that was your, your original assessment?
Right, uh, based on the information that we had at that time. And then when the abatement was filed, they presented some more income information. So we reviewed that information and adjusted our approach. By utilizing, utilizing that information, um, the assessed value should be reduced.
So re-reading through your explanation here, you know, this, this is all new to me too, the income capitalization and discounted cash flow and, and net present value. Um, you use the income capitalization method to determine this? Is, um, is that, that how you derived the figures?
Yes, so, um, with the, yes, that is correct.
So is, why did you choose that over the discounted cash flow method?
Uh, I apologize. We use, we looked at both the income capitalization method as well as the discounted flow.
And then met in the middle.
Cash flow method. And then we reconciled those two.
Right. Yeah, so she's got both in there.
Okay, yep.
That makes better sense.
But that, so, uh, they were primarily focused on the discounted cash flow method in, in their estimation that the cash flows would be discounted more so, you know, over time. Um, we just disagree with as far as their value. They were very close to their value, but we feel that value, we came up with, uh, that reflects market value. There's, uh, based on the income that's being produced, uh, for the landowner in their lease agreement.
Karen, is this something we're gonna, we should expect to see with all solar farms?
We have two other solar farms. We'll be, we'll, so solar, assessing solar farms is something that's relatively new throughout the state of Maine. Um, we just had a class on Thursday of last week with other assessors discussing, uh, these approaches to value. Um, and we're, we are, uh, we are consistent with other assessors in the state as far as our approach with assessing, uh, solar farms. I recently looked into this because some interest from people that want to turn property into a solar farm. Um, a company that I contacted said that they, if you were doing a leased version of the land, you could expect something around $1,200 per acre per year.
Of income?
As the landowner, um, getting that much per acre, um, let's see, I don't, each, each lease is a little bit different, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that every company and everything is the same, but I'm just saying, from the company that I, I spoke to, they said that for, for a leased situation where they come in and 25-year lease and they set up everything, that the landowner would get $1,200 per acre per year. I mean, it's not like egg busters worth, you know, money, you know? You might make more money turning it into a storage facility.
Yeah.
Probably.
Probably very true.
And Karen, this, this is just for the land, right? The value of the land underneath the panels, the panels themselves are assessed at another million and a half, right?
Well, the abatement is for the land owner, which is 193 Route 236 LLC. However, the, the solar farm has it in their lease that they pay the taxes, so they are going through their agents. You know, they were very much interested in having it, uh, the land value revisited. So, um, but this is strictly for the land, that we, we assess the, uh, the solar farm for the solar panels and all of that, um, as well. Um, however, this particular one will come, will qualify for the renewable energy equipment exemption. So that's a different story. That's two different things. So this is strictly, this abatement is for.
Strictly the land, okay.
For the physical land. Right? Any other questions?
No, I think, um, Karen, they did it, their due diligence and I think they met a fair, fair market value there. And I would make a motion to accept the, uh, abatement at, looks like the reduced value of 498,600. And the abatement to be granted of $3,390.99.
I got a question.
Sorry.
Second or first?
Yep. We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. What were the, what were the, um, landowners looking for? I mean, we've reassessed it at this. What were they originally looking for?
That 441, I think.
They were looking for 441.
Okay.
And we'll be at 498,600.
Okay.
For the total assessed value. Um, they didn't give considerations of the excess acres. I think they were primarily focused on that, um, prime site.
Okay.
Where, uh, we were assessed commercially.
All right. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. There's Noah.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. And next Karen?
The next thing is a supplement, um, and it's regarding, uh, homestead and veterans exemptions. Uh, the subject property is a multi-family dwelling unit, um, in which the property owner had a homestead exemption since, uh, since fiscal year 20 and a veteran's exemption since fiscal year 2009. Excuse me, the homestead exemption was fiscal year 2000. Um, the property owner transferred ownership to a, an LLC, um, for which he's the principal owner. However, upon transfer to the LLC, the property owner was no longer entitled to the exemptions because exemptions apply only to individuals and not an LLC. The homestead and veteran exemptions were not removed from the property card for fiscal years, uh, 20, uh, 2020, 2021, and 2022. As a result of this error, the assessor must provide notice of denial, including the reasons for the denial, to the applicant by either, you know, personal delivery or regular mail, and this is per state law, and I referenced the state law. Because the property owner improperly received these exemptions within the past 10 years, the assessor must supplementally assess the property for which the property exemption was improperly received, plus cost of interest, again, according to state law. So as the assessors for the town of Burwick, it's recommended that you sign the attached notification, uh, letter to the property owner. Um, and, uh, a copy of the signed letter, uh, once you've signed it, the copy of it will be, uh, emailed to Maine Revenue Services, to make a tendency at Maine Revenue Services as a notification, uh, which is required by state law. The bureau will then deduct the value of the portion of the supplement assessment that retains to any funds previously reimbursed to the town, um, from the next reimbursement that's issued to the town. So that will be subtracted from the reimbursement that you receive next year. Um, however, we are issuing a, a supplement and, uh, I took that out in the spreadsheet. We have to issue, uh, for each of the three years, um, and the total amount for all three years is $1,866.03.
Any questions for Karen?
So which year did it change ownership to the LLC?
First year that it changed was in fiscal year 1920.
Okay. Thank you.
This sounds pretty straightforward, no following state laws and.
I'd also like to point out, I did contact the property owner, so he is aware of this situation.
I was gonna ask you, Jeff must be very disappointed.
He understands and, uh, he understands that it, uh, the LLC is not qualified for those exemptions.
Okay. So we know it's coming?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes. He understands that, yes, that, uh, that he's not entitled to these exemptions with the ownership in as an LLC.
Okay. Do you need three separate motions for each year?
Uh, no.
Uh, yeah, I would recommend, and I apologize for not putting on the demo, but I would recommend a motion to sign the letter to the property owner and for each of the years noted, um, and the amount noted.
Oh, good.
Plus we got seven signatures just on that paper.
I know.
So there is a lot of science that each, each supplement needs to be signed by.
Yes.
Okay.
By, like, board. And I'll tell you what those amounts are for each year if you'd like to include that in the motion.
I think I.
So for fiscal, fiscal year 2019, 20, the amount was 500 and $74.14. The amount for fiscal year, uh, 2021 is, um, 655, excuse me.
I think goes the other way, right?
The other way around. So for 2019, 20, it's $636.75. For fiscal year 2021, $655.14. And for fiscal year 21, 22, it's $574.14.
All right.
You did get me, cause you said 1920, 20, and I went, are you talking about 1920? Or is it 2019? Fiscal year 19, 19 and 20?
Yes.
All right, look for a motion to sign the letter of notice. We have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Nobody wanted to spit all that out, right?
Yeah.
All right. That, that was the easy one, to sign the letter. I'll go through the roll. There's Noah.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. Now we need a motion for each individual year, is what you want, Karen?
Yes, because they all, they all need to be, should be approved separately.
Yep.
So.
All right, I'll kick off the first one, 2019. I'll make the motion that, uh, we approve the supplement for $637.75.
636.
630. Karen?
I got 636.75.
36, okay.
A second.
636.75.
Motion in a second. I'll go through the rolls. There's Noah.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And myself is a yes. There's one down. There's one down. Next year?
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the supplement for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $655.14.
I'll second.
No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And one more?
Oh, they don't have it in front of them. Darn it. All right. I'll make a motion to accept the supplement for 21, 22 in the amount of $574.14.
Second.
No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And that should take care of it. Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Have a good evening. I'll take care of that. And second comment is, we have none. We do have an executive session. We will not be making any decisions or votes in there. Is, we'll go into that at the end of our regular business. Is anything else under other business, non-agenda items?
Nothing from me.
If not, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session under Title I, subsection 405, 6A, for the discussion of personnel.
Second.
All those in favor? Say yeah.
Yeah.
I'll skip this one. All right. Give us a couple minutes to get the board cleared and...
Signatures that you need before we forget.
Yep.
Yep, and go off here.
Let's see, $10,000.